Members of the council, the first order of business is the adoption of the minutes of the council meeting of January 22nd, 2007. Motion to adopt by Councilor Thompson, seconded by Councilor Fisher. Any discussion or changes or amendments to those minutes? Having seen none, all those in favor? Any opposed? The motion is carried. Thank you. This time I'd like to ask for any disclosures of a pecuniary interest by any members of council. Councilor Thompson?
Yes, I have a pecuniary interest with respect to account number 308226.
Thank you. Councilor Wing?
Bylaw 2007-26 and also Committee of the whole item both on Niagara Parks Commission, when my supposed support.
Thank you. Councilor Carrion?
Thank you. You worked up an item that was in the community services relating to a sign. It's one of my neighbors doing a sign. I wasn't at the meeting, so I don't know what you did.
Okay. Well noted. Thank you. And I have an interest in check number 308369 payable to myself. Any others? Okay. Having seen none, this evening we have a presentation by Tamara Coleman-Lawrie from the Women's Place of Niagara, South Niagara. She's a development officer there, and Tamara's going to be here to address us on her organization's annual bowling tournament. And she's with our district commander, Mr. Brian Eckert. Tamara, welcome.
Thank you. Your worship, Mayor Salsey and councilors, thank you for the opportunity to speak with you this evening about our annual strike-out violence bowling tournament and domestic violence. We're here to formally kick off our annual strike-out violence event, to inform and educate the community about services and domestic violence, and discuss our commitment to strengthening the partnership of Women's Place of South Niagara and the Niagara Regional Police Service. As you are aware, Women's Place of South Niagara operates two shelters in the Niagara region, our round shelter and Nova House here in Niagara Falls. Our shelters not only provide safe refuge, but also provide 24-hour crisis lines, counseling programs for women and children. Thank you. Empowerment programs, legal support and advocacy, as well as transition support, which helps families with housing, employment, education, and obtaining a successful life. Women and children experiencing abuse and violence are able to access our shelter and the many free and confidential programs and services 24 hours a day, 365 days. Most importantly, those that are experiencing violence do not need to stay in our shelter to utilize our support services. They are also able to use Nova House and its services on an outreach basis. Yes, last year alone, our Niagara Falls shelters received nearly 1,500 crisis calls, provided safe shelter to over 150 women and children, and provided support and services to an additional 1,000 women and children on a non-residential basis. Most recently, Nova House held the grand opening of our new capital project. It is with true sincerity that we express our gratitude to the city of Niagara Falls and to our community for their support and financial contributions to this project. Now Nova Host is able to provide an environment that is conducive for women and children to transition to a violence-free life, are able to provide adequate support systems, and we have doubled our capacity to support victims of violence. Prior to the opening of our new shelter, we were unfortunately referring over 100 women and children annually to other facilities due to the lack of space at Old Nova House. Thank you to all who assisted us in building a safe, new, accessible shelter in Niagara Falls. As Women's Place of South Niagara is only funded 70% by the Ministry of Community and Social Services, we are required to fundraise the remaining portion through private donations, municipal support, and through events such as the Strikeout Violence Event. The Strikeout Violence Event assists us in bridging the gap between government funding and our required annual operating dollars. All funds raised through this event support both of our shelters for women and children, and help us maintain the vital operations of our shelter and the programs that educate and counsel women. Without events such as this, we would not be able to continue the work that we do. As noted, the Strikeout Violence Event is a community partnership between the Niagara Regional Police and Women's Place. At this time, I'd like to introduce you to Brian Eckert, Inspector Brian Eckert, one of our tournament co-chairs.
Thank you, Tamara. And on behalf of Chief Wendy Southall, Police Services Board, and all of the men and women both sworn and civilian of the Niagara Regional Police Service, I want to thank you, Mayor Salsey and councilors, for allowing us to be here today. This is my first time before council since the election. I would like to congratulate the successful returning councilors and welcome the new faces, but familiar faces to town. The relationship between the police and Women's Place has grown tremendously over the years. There is a genuine mutual respect and a level of cooperation that did not always exist. We were often adversarial, which was quite surprising to many of us, because we shared a common goal, and that goal was to assist victims of domestic violence and to work hard to ending this unacceptable occurrence in our communities. It is a natural fit for the police and Women's Place to work together to achieve this. The Strikeout Violence Campaign is an effort to empower the communities of Niagara region in helping us reach our goal of eradicating domestic violence. Thousands of women and children are in violent homes across this community. Together, our communities continue to diminish the stigma of abused women and children and provide safe shelter, counseling, education, and transitional services that help families live safe, violent-free lives. I am very pleased to have been asked to co-chair this event again, and on behalf of my co-chair, Joe Talarito, who couldn't be here, I'd like to thank Tamara and Women's Place for this honor. The event gets bigger each year and is a testament to our community. The bowlers and sponsors represent a broad spectrum of our society: police, business, healthcare, activists, social workers, politicians, service clubs, and just plain, everyday, caring people. Although this is an extremely fun and worthwhile event, I look forward to the day when it will not be necessary to hold this event. Not only do we challenge our communities to become ambassadors for the many victims of violence, but we also challenge the businesses of the Niagara region to step forward and become sponsors of this event. As an event that took place in St. Catherine's a few years ago, it is everybody's business to vet violence. In addition to the tremendous support from the community, we would like to challenge the city of Niagara Falls to again enter a team in the event and to become a sponsor of this annual event. We feel confident that with Mayor Salsey and his personal bowling expertise, as well as our city councilors, we will be represented well again by the city of Niagara Falls. Thank you again for your continued support and your participation, and on behalf of Women's Place, the Strikeout Violence Committee, and the hundreds of clients that Women's Place services, we thank you for your time this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Inspector, and Tamara. I'm sure we're ready to take up the challenge, and I know that Councilor Iainoni has a comment. Councilor?
No, I just moved we submit a team. I think historically, it's been The Ringer, D O Daddy, Dean, and myself, and anybody else who'd care to join us. So I moved that we submit a team.
Good. Motion to submit a team, seconded by Alderman Maves. Okay? Any discussion? Having seen none, no comments?
Worship, we can just confirm the date?
Sorry, it's Friday, March 2nd. And I cannot send you all the details. I'll send you all the details.
Yes.
The one change this year is the same freight price, and it's for a great cause. Dinner this year is, can move to Club of Cal.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor, seconded, and duly seconded by Councilor Maves. All those in favor? Motion is carried. Thank you very much, Tamara. Brian, thank you for being here. We appreciate the effort. Thank you. Next order of business, members of council, we have two members of our regional council joining us this evening, Councilor Bill Smeaton and Councilor Norm Puttig. And I believe Councilor Norm Puttig wants to address council on the duplication of services between the two municipalities of government. Welcome, Mr. Puttig.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I said that the last time I was here, I was told I had 10 minutes. I'm only going to take about three. I have some good news. First of all, I don't think you mind, Mr. Mayor, if I was watching your last meeting in regards to secret ballots. I brought that before the regional council, through regional solicitor. I only took two meetings. We prepared it one week, and then finally did the ballots at open council. In regard to duplication, I sent you a note or a letter to speak on notices of motion that I would be putting at the region on February the 8th. That's their procedure. And there were two. One was duplication of services, which had to do with economic development and tourism. And the second one, in order to get their attention, I told it was governance. Either you have one city, three cities, or six. I subsequently took that out. The good news is, I was told that it would never happen, but at our first meeting on corporate services during the budgets, the NEDC, the arm of the region, which is a private corporation, we had a real good discussion, and there was a motion made unanimously to refer February the 8th for a discussion, and I hope approval, to do a review of all the EDAs of the region, tourism, and I hope to include Chamber Commerce who are in that zone. So, on that point, I'm here this evening to simply ask that you send a motion. Of course, I don't expect you to do it without maybe calling the clerk at the region to get the exact what went on at NEDC, and support that discussion, which I've been around long enough to know. I've been told that over the 10 years, when they come in and ask for the $2 million, and they're seeking $265,000 more this year, in talking to senior staff, and our corporate man who does finance, he said, "We don't get involved at all. They come speak and get the money." I told him, "I want to close them down. I've got potential also." The reason this started, the first email I made a week after I was elected, I sent an email to NetCor and asked for information on their trip to Korea and Japan regarding who went, the cost, and if I could see the results of that trip. Subsequently, I was told I couldn't have it, and I thought, "Oh, my God." So, I'm happy to report that the motion was made to bring it back on the 8th. In regard to my friend, Councilor Smeaton and Councilor Greenwood, we communicate email or other to keep ourselves up to date on that duplication on the cause. After the NEDC motion, I had 12 regional councilors call me and tell me that this should have been done 10 years ago. So, if you will do that, I would be very happy. And just mention to you, if I was speaking tonight on the motion, that would come up as far as I indicated to you, notice of motion, I was going to just say a couple of things. And this will take 10 seconds, and then I'll post me. You remember, if I may, your worship, you remember Councilor Thompson 19 years ago when the police officer or the guard came in and tapped me on the shoulder, and you wondered what it was? It was my grandson, my first grandson. He's 19, I'm 50.
I wasn't born then.
Yeah. But anyway, I gotta get home. I clipped out some things of all the businesses closing in the Niagara region, and I won't bore you with that, because if you ever, if it sounded amazur. In here, the manager of NetCor, Niagara does need to be concerned with lost manufacturing jobs, and then I, you can read this, then he goes over here, "Growth in smaller companies is evenly spread across many sectors: retail, restaurants, and tourism." Tourism, now, you know, I mean, we all know that, so he's taking credit. And I say that because I checked this out, and he takes credit for everything. And one last thing, and please, somebody tell me. This is what he says, it's quoted here. "The region has gained 6,000 new companies since 1999, from small entrepreneurs to companies with up to 100 employees." Now, I took 12 municipalities, and I divided that. I even put in Wayne, who haven't had a new industry there, I understand, in 100 years. And then I took the other smaller ones, or the smaller ones, and I put that down to about four municipalities that have the largest populations and EDA offices and tourism offices. And I'm going to leave you with that, because if you can tell me where we have 6,000 new businesses since 1999. So, if I have that along on Thursday, I'll be, and by the way, I was going to keep it at 10 or 12 minutes. I'll let you have a busy evening, and I know this has been an issue for a long time. So, I'm hoping on next Thursday, along with Councilor Smeaton, that we get through to end the duplication, and if it takes six months a year, two years. Once that's done, I'm finished with it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Good to see you.
See you. Thank you. Other questions of Councilors, first of all, there's some questions by councilors. Councilor Puttig?
Speak louder. Bill didn't bring us here in aid tonight.
Yeah. Councilor Thompson and Councilor Fisher?
Thank you, the opportunity to address this. I knew it wouldn't take three minutes, so. First of all, this is probably something that is long overdue. If you make any comment about tourism from Niagara Falls, it's really frowned on by the rest of the region, because we seem to always be the fat cats as far as tourism is concerned, and it doesn't go well around with the rest of the municipalities in the region. And we pay 30% of the bill for NetCor, and I understand that it's in excess of $2 million now. So, I think that an examination of any of these committees is appropriate, and this one in particular is long overdue. And as a matter of fact, with Alderman or Councilor Puttig's work in the last couple of months, the Niagara Falls tourism has received detailed information with respect to what responsibility NetCor has with respect to tourism, and what they expect Niagara Falls tourism to be doing. So, there has been actually some agreement with respect to activities, just as a result of some initial work by Councilor Puttig in the last little while. But I think the whole realm of this particular NetCor and EDA's throughout the region, which is totally inconsistent, has to be reexamined, and hopefully there is some opportunity for some cost savings and some additional responsibility by Niagara Falls tourism in the tourism community with respect to the entire region. So, I would very much support that and make a motion to that effect.
You want to qualify your motion, Councilor?
Yes, that we support the reexamination of NetCor generally and specifically with respect to tourism throughout the region.
Please, there's a second there. Councilor Fisher, do you wish to make comment?
No.
Councilor Carrion?
Thank you, worship. I'd just like to commend Alderman Puttig as well. Any of our regional councilors who are going to work towards stopping up the duplication of services that the region and the city have and save the taxpayers' money will be welcomed by everyone, and I'm certainly going to support this, your worship.
Thank you. You may be aware as well that members of council and your correspondents tonight, you have some information from our Director of Business Development, talking about a meeting that was held between the mayor's CAOs and business development staff from the four cities of St. Catherine's, Niagara Falls, Welland, and Fort Erie, recently to discuss NetCor's involvement with us, because we do have business development departments, and we're asking for additional information, yet we're looking at how we can more effective and efficiently create our service delivery to them. So, we're asking for the same thing. I think, sorry, Councilor Puttig is pushing on the same idea, so I think it's worthy of noting. So, we just have a memo to that effect as well in the package.
I just clarify that.
Sure.
You say that, I was working on it. I looked at reports CAD 15, 2006, and there's one thing out of there. It says, "Duplication of resources, take resources away from other non-duplicated community priorities," and so on and so forth. I was in communication, Mr. Mayor, with Minister of Municipal Affairs, so I go on with very well, and he sent back two, which I put in your package, two sections of the municipal act where CAOs and the CEO of the region, and the CEO's of the municipalities could implement exactly what I'm here to do. I never knew that. I did go in and speak to the head CEO. I tried to go through the proper channels, and so on. When the act was looked at, they said, "Oh, yeah, we're aware of that." And I said, "Well, why didn't you do something about it?" And just to shrug his shoulders. So, I'm glad you brought that up, Mr. Mayor, because since the CEO's meet every month or every five weeks, I'd ask for a report back from what we do. This could have been done if somebody had have told me this, but I brought it up. In regard to what you have there tonight, it's the same thing with tourism. I started asking questions, and all of a sudden, everybody got nice because their budget's coming up next week. I want to close down NEDC, and I'm going to bring up things that I can't bring up publicly about nepotism and so on and so forth. So, I better go home, because Rosie's probably sitting there at home saying, "Oh, Norm, sit down, sit down." So, thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council. I'll see you on the 8th, and God knows, we'll have another dust-up. I love them over there. They're great people.
Thank you. Thank you very much, members of council. We have a motion on the floor. Any other comments with respect to the motion? Having seen none, all those in favor? Opposed, the motion is carried now. Thank you very much. Members of council, the next item on the agenda is a planning issue, and we do have a request in your handout, handout by the clerk this evening for a deferral. I'm not sure what your pleasure is this evening. We have the proponent here, and I believe, Mr. Clerk, the requests to defer, they are not the tenants. Is that correct?
Through the chair, I'm unaware if, the letter comes from a law firm, Wood Bull, and they represent property owners known as Smart Centers Incorporated, Oakwood Place Shopping Center, who own some lands in the vicinity of the application. They're asking for, they're objecting to the report, and they're asking for deferral based on concerns about the traffic issues surrounding.
Pleasure, council? Councilor Thompson and Councilor Carrion?
Could we have, through your legal opinion with respect to this?
Certainly.
Can we proceed, or is there something we should be aware of and just defer?
Okay. We'll get that answer for you. Ms. Kelly, have you seen the correspondence?
Through you. Yes, I've seen the correspondence. Ms. Bull has requested a deferral on the basis of her client's request indicating that she'd like to see an MTO deal negotiated as it impacts her clients, but it certainly is a requirement that you defer it for that reason.
Right.
To put her information forward in terms of, in the gist of the letter itself, it's not necessary that you defer on that basis. You have seen the contents of the letter.
We have had discussion with her client with respect to the whole area, with respect to the future of the node, of business node of the McLeod-Quinney corridor. We understand that there were going to be some submissions. Mr. Darbison, are you aware of that, those meetings? I know Mr. Hirdlich was at the meeting. Did he brief you at all?
Yes, and I am aware of that, and I actually have a memorandum here from Jeff Holman regarding the whole matter of contributions from developers towards the future improvement of the McLeod Road area. And this memorandum talks about what we're recommending to council this evening, a whole provision, and the whole provision on the zoning bylaw will allow time for a development agreement to be worked up with this particular developer, to have him pay his fair share of the costs associated with increased traffic along McLeod Road. So, staff are fully aware of this, who have met with the MTO, and one of the recommendations this evening on this report reflects a mechanism to ensure that there will be contributions from developers.
Are there any questions, Mr. Darbison, with respect to that? Because I'm not sure if it's clear, but we're working with all the developments in the area to see if we can come up with a mechanism that does not exist at this point. Correspondence was sent out. We did have the engagement of our local MPP, Mr. Kim Crater, who attended the meeting, and we believe we're making headway on behalf of all the proponents who may seek to find some equity, equity in a situation that would be fair to them if and when they develop their different projects. So, Councilor Carrion, do you want to make a comment?
Thank you, worship. I think in light of the fact that, as we all know, Niagara Square's been struggling for years, it looks like they're just on the verge of a resurgence, and that matter is addressed in the report, your worship, very detailed in the report. We should just continue.
Okay. Can I have a motion to that effect, Councilor? Moved by Councilor Carrion, seconded by Councilor Iainoni. Any discussion further? Having seen none, all those in favor? The motion is carried. Thank you very much. At this point, I'd like to ask the clerk to introduce the next item on the agenda, please.
A public meeting is now being convened to consider a proposed amendment to the city's zoning bylaw for a proposed expansion to Niagara Square located at 7555 Montrose Road. Notice was given by first-class mail in accordance with the Planning Act on Friday, January 5th, 2007, and by posting a sign on the property in question. Anyone who wants notice of the passage of the zoning bylaw amendment or to participate in any site plan process applicable shall leave their name on the sign and sheet outside, Council Chamber.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. At this time, I'd like to ask the Director of Planning to explain the purpose and the reason for the proposed bylaw amendment. Mr. Darbison?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of councilors. This application this evening is for RRVP Niagara Square Inc., it's Rio Pan, and it is a proposed expansion of the Niagara Square area conference. This is a location map of the area, and the overall site is mostly developed. The property towards the north along McLeod Road is an open area at this time. It's undeveloped portion, and that is the focus of the expansion plan this evening. This is a proposed Canadian Tire store on the Niagara Square property. This is a site plan indicating the Niagara Square as it currently exists, the proposed Canadian Tire building to the north, and you see some smaller outbuildings along Montrose Road. Those will be future retail or restaurant-type uses. The application this evening proposes to increase the gross leasehold floor area up to 50,000 square meters. We approximately have 44,000 square meters currently in our zoning bylaw. The next part of the application is proposing to reduce the minimum parking requirements to one space per 20 square meters. Third part of the application proposes to increase the lot coverage of the proposed Niagara Square development to 35%. And fourthly, to reduce the building setbacks along McLeod Road for the proposed Canadian Tire store. In terms of the planning analysis, the official plan designates the Niagara Square area as major commercial. Official Plan Amendment Number 60 permits Niagara Square to expand to 50,000 square meters. This application therefore conforms with the official plan. A new Canadian Tire store is being proposed, together with smaller retail and service commercial outlets. The official plan also seeks to retain existing tree cover where possible. Now, this is a corner of McLeod Road and Kaler, and it is where the Canadian Tire will be going, and it is a fairly wooded site. Given that most of the trees are intended to be removed, revision should be made for tree planting around the perimeter of the property. In terms of zoning, the subject lands are zone-planned commercial shopping center. This zoning permits a gross leasehold floor area of approximately 44,000 square feet. And the proposed amendments are to increase the GF, GLFA, to 50,000 square meters, which is consistent with the official plan. Reducing the minimum parking standard to one space for every 20 square meters has been supported by a parking and traffic study. Increasing the building lot coverage from 25 to 35% can be accommodated by the reduced parking standard, and reducing the minimum building setback to the property along McLeod Road from 18 meters to 3 meters. This is a proposed application. For the Canadian Tire store is not recommended. At the very minimum, a 6-meter setback should be maintained as a planning strip, which would also serve as a landscape buffer to stream the proposed Canadian Tire Garden Center. It's our conclusion this evening that the requested amendment can be supported. It implements the official plan policies regarding gross leasehold floor area. The addition of a Canadian Tire store along with other small stores will help strengthen Niagara Square node and assist in its function as a regional shopping facility. Increasing the building setback from McLeod Road from the proposed 3 meters to 6 meters will be more consistent with the surrounding development, provide room to effectively stream the garden center. On that point, I'll note that other developments in our community have their own shopping center. They have a large setback around 18 meters total. The property that the city sold to the west of the site, in fact, has that type of setback. The McBane Center, for example, has a very generous setback. We believe that that setback is appropriate and important, and rather than reducing it down to 3 meters, we would like to promote a 6-meter setback for the reasons I've mentioned. And finally, a whole provision is recommended to be placed on the land until the cost-sharing for road improvements are determined and secured for appropriate development agreements. It's our recommendation this evening, therefore, to support the proposed amendment with the holding zone provision. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Darbison. Members of the public are advised that failure to make an oral or written submission at this public meeting could result in the Ontario Municipal Board dismissing any referral that it receives if the party has not made an oral written submission at this public meeting. Council will hear from anyone other than the applicant. Council will hear from anyone other than the applicant who wishes to speak to the proposed bylaw amendment. Would you like to invite those people forward? Anybody other than the applicant who wishes to speak to the proposed bylaw amendment? Is there anyone other than the applicant who wishes to speak? Feeling that, then council will now hear from the applicant or his representative. Would you like to come forward, please? And for the record, would you be kind enough to state your name, please?
Good evening, members of council, mayor. My name is Jonathan Rubin and I represent Canadian Tire Real Estate Limited. Purpose of my discussion is to briefly highlight the proposed Canadian Tire store development. As most of you are aware, there are two Canadian Tire stores in Niagara Falls. Our north store is located at Thorl Stone in Montrose and the existing south store on McLeod at Dorchester. For a way of introduction, Canadian Tire has undergone a national redevelopment of its store network during the last year and a half through its Concept 2020 program. The new program upgrades the look, both interior and exterior of our stores, which provides for a more comfortable and pleasant customer shopping experience. I've heard a rendering elevation of this whole store and that's not having a power phone available.
Okay, good. They can't hear you on TV yet, so.
Members of council, mayor, over here around Yezel is a proposed rendering of the Canadian Tire store elevation and clearly it demonstrates how we've, over the years, and what you're seeing here, we've made effort to upgrade the facility both from an exterior and interior standpoint as well. The existing store on McLeod, which was built in 1995, is old format store, which clearly we feel our operation has outgrown. As such, we have decided to look at other development opportunities and have settled on Niagara Square. Niagara Square is a well-positioned center which Canadian Tire clearly feels will be a complement to our proposed development. Canadian Tire, through the last several months, has had the opportunity to work with staff and Rio Can towards a cohesive development. On November 27th of last year, staff along with Canadian Tire, Rio Can, and the region identified a significant oak tree, red oak tree, I should say, worth preserving. What you'll see here, members of council, mayor, is a landscape plan and on the landscape plan, at the rear of the proposed Canadian Tire facility, is the red oak tree that we are preserving. So as such, I'm pleased to say that Canadian Tire has agreed to preserve the red oak tree and has prepared to require a tree inventory and vegetation assessment plan in consultation with our arborists. Canadian Tire, as well, is proceeding with a recommended six-meter building setback. The six-meter setback will allow for a six-meter landscape strip along the McLeod frontage and will act as a screen for the garden center. In addition, Canadian Tire will use best efforts to plant native species along the perimeter due to the loss of the woodlot. Lastly, through my discussions with staff and subsequent meeting with the mayor on January 26th, on behalf of Canadian Tire, I look forward to delivering the city a well-planned and urban-friendly development. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions of members of council? Yes, Counselor Carrion?
Thank you, your worship. Just a comment on what this gentleman thinks about the holding provision and working out the details about the future traffic patterns and the road improvements. Are you in agreement with that?
Please state your name again.
Thank you. I'm Joel Farber, I'm the solicitor for Rio Can. And through you, Mr. Mayor, to the councilors' questions, we're working with the staff, with the region, and the MTO to settle that matter. We prefer to know earlier rather than later when the development is going to be able to proceed and that's why there's some reluctance on our part to deal with it by way of the H. But that being said, what we're going to do, and what we have been doing, is to actually try to work towards the agreements themselves which will allow the development to proceed forward.
And Mr. Farber, I believe we're talking about $8 million roughly for the total improvement for the area, is that correct?
We really don't know what the improvements are, what improvements will be required for their share.
Yes, that's right.
And in, through you, Mr. Mayor, as a fundamental term of that agreement, expect that Rio Can, for instance, would be only required to contribute their share for the new development that they are proposing.
Certainly.
Roughly at 60.
That's right. Okay, is that pretty clear?
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. Any other questions of the applicant at this point, your solicitor? Having seen none, and at this time, the public meeting with respect to the proposed zoning bylaw amendment is now concluded, and I'd like to ask the members of council, with their pleasures, with respect to this proposed zoning bylaw amendment. Yes, moved by Counselor Ainoni, seconded by Counselor Thompson. Any discussion to the motion? Having seen none, all in favor? The motion is carried. Thank you very much. Thank you for your submission. At this point, members of council, I believe the clerk has some issues that he'd like to bring forward. Mr. Clerk, with respect to the in-camera discussion, would you like to introduce the next one?
I think there is a presentation.
Okay. Mr. McDonald?
Thank you, worship. Yes, actually, we have a brief presentation to make just as a follow-up to the discussion we've had relative to the second proposal from Capital Sports. We received actually quite a bit of data from Capital Sports, which included a pro forma that showed actually a 30-year financial analysis and quite a detailed report from them. And the purpose in this very brief presentation is just really to highlight and for council, the key issues related to that. And council can provide direction from that point. The first point I'll deal with is simply a couple of key points in terms of what the deal is and most of us, and I think most of the public are aware generally what's been going on. It's been the issue in the press over the past week, what has changed with this proposal from the last proposal, and the assumptions that are built into the proposal as well. And also, we want to talk a little bit about when all that is said and done, what are the financial implications to the city in a comparative analysis approach between this proposal and what we currently have on the table or on our capital budget with the current twin pad facility. And there are also a final slide just to touch on the, some of the implications to the community if in fact we accept the proposal as it is. In essence, the new proposal we have highlights with $40 million requirement from the city. The information we have deals with a couple of numbers and this is really meant to be an average. We, 40 million is mentioned on one document and something a little bit less than that is mentioned, but so not to be held to this. We're talking $40 million the city would have to commit to building this new OHL facility. There would be a revenue split, however, with the net revenue that would be generated from this facility with an 80% of that net revenue going to the city and 20% going to Bidoff, and that's relative to the operation itself really as a performance incentive for the facility. CSMI estimates that the net annual revenue over 30 years to be approximately 1.8. Sorry, we have a little typing error up there. Sorry, 1.3, I'm sorry, 1.3.
1.38.
3.8, yes. Now I'll get it right this time. 1.38, I knew 8 was in there. So that's an estimate over the 30 years, a little lower early on and as it changes. That's a critical point with this proposal and I'm going to refer to it again in a moment. Also, CSMI indicates that they would prefer a location for this sport and entertainment complex to be in close proximity to the convention center and the casino for obvious reasons. There are sort of key points without getting into the details of the pro forma. What's changed from the last time we met, and again, just highlighting these changes, is that the last time, there was an offer of a $5 million loan basically from Mr. Bidoff. And I refer to it as a loan because the idea was to help offset some of our capital costs in our books, but the intent, of course, is that we would repay that $5 million with appropriate interest. That's no longer on the table, which in essence frees up any net revenue to go towards our costs as opposed to having to pay back the loan. The revenue split is a key change to the proposal. Last time around, we did not have an 80/20 revenue split and from the revenue that would come to the city, we had to pay off the cost of this $5 million. So that's probably, that's a significant change to this proposal. Another fairly minor change is the, there's a management fee to operate the facility and on the first proposal, it mentioned a $250,000 cost with an additional $100,000 as a performance incentive to go up to 350. This proposal suggests 350 from the get-go basically for the management fee. All other aspects, and they're significant relative to the license, management agreements and so on, remain basically the same. So the heart of it is, we put up $40 million, but the change here is, is that we would generate a net revenue to help offset our costs. That's the heart of the change to the arrangement. There's numerous assumptions made throughout the proposal and a key point that we have addressed is that the information has not been independently verified. There are several points in there. This is a proposal, there has not been a market analysis and it's based on, I guess, the best efforts on the proponent to indicate what their assumptions are, drawing on other facilities in the province. There are certain exclusions in the proposal, i.e. parking and onsite preparation is not included, so this $40 million is talking about the cost of the building itself. It doesn't include the cost to provide parking and other ancillary uses around the building. It's assumed that we would designate this property as a municipal capital facility, which we feel is logical, that would basically indicate that we would waive all building permit fees, development charges and so on. And of course, the big assumption is that there would be a net revenue of the 1.38 million dollars and the assumption is that that's achievable. And that's really a key issue in our discussions because, you know, that's a moving target. If it wasn't 1.38, if it was 1.5, that would be good, but if it's 0.38 and not 1.38, the city would be on the hook to deal with the balance. And it goes to the confidence the city might have on the ability to raise a net revenue of approximately 1.38. The other proposal was done, of course, a few weeks ago, but basically talked about a construction start date of February 07, which we realize that's not likely to happen. Also, Niagara Falls Memorial Arena would have to be retrofitted in order to handle the junior age team as of September 07. And I'm going to talk in a few minutes in terms of cost implications of that. And of course, the building would be ready by September of 08, so the timeline is very tight. The sports and entertainment facility would be built, of course, on city property and therefore the municipal capital facility reference. The assumption, of course, is that this facility would attract an adequate number of non-hockey events to create really this financial viable facility. And that's critical with this, the hockey alone would not generate the revenue, of course, that we would need to make this a success. And again, there's some due diligence that still has not been done on that area. Another assumption is that there's a set amount of money to be generated in the pro forma from community rentals and the estimate is that the community would be willing to pay $150 for non-prime and $250 for prime. And while that may be the norm in some communities, our current costs are significantly less than that. And however, that's one of the assumptions that we dealt with. This is a little tougher to see and I'll speak to it a little bit, but this is really the financial analysis as we've laid it out. And again, we have 12, 15-plus pages of details on this, so this is meant to be just an overview and a summary. And what we have here is a bit of a comparative analysis, on the far right being the existing twin pad arena that we've been progressing along. And just to the left is the Capital Sports and Entertainment Complex. So what we've got here, $40 million on the top to start and we've got 18.7 on the existing twin pad. And I'll go down the column here to indicate our bottom line here. So we're talking $40 million to start. On top of the $40 million, we're looking at, we've made reference to land costs here, even though we haven't put a number in, I don't think we believe that it's practical for us to actually acquire land in the tourism core. We don't own land in the tourism core at this point and we know it's very expensive to acquire. But even if we put it on any site other than the site we're planning, even if we own it, there's a lost opportunity cost to us, but we haven't put a number in. Skip down a bit, there's what we call a sunk cost of approximately $1 million and that's really the money we've already spent on the design work and so on and the site on, for the twin pad that we're dealing with. So that would be, that's a cost we've lost already. To retrofit Memorial Arena, and again, these are estimates, to get it ready to play, we're estimating approximately $750,000. And in addition to that, one of the exclusions, of course, in the deal, as I mentioned, this is really the footprint and just outside the footprint, what's not included is the cost of parking and asphalt in parking and we're dealing with parking constantly and we know that we're in the range of $5,000, $6,000 typically per site. So we're talking as much as $6 million to prepare the site to include the adequate parking that would be necessary for a building of this size. Also, what's not included in the proposal, the next two points, the second one is the 7.3 million, which is the proposal that we would build a more of a shell twin pad arena than is currently being proposed. So we have to, of course, add to do the proper comparisons of 7.3 million and approximately 1.2 million for the parking and other related costs to compare them. So that's an additional $16 million approximately to the 40. And I'm going to keep going down this line and then I'll do the comparison. So we're talking at this point about $56 million to move forward on this. However, we can reduce that by about $3.2 million because we already have a commitment of Section 37 funds, about 1.2 million, and that would come in the mix here somehow. We have land sales and we're estimating to net at least $2 million on that, so we could reduce that cost. So we believe we would be down to a capital cost of about $53 million. If we move right across here, there's also some adjustments on the other side because there's a $1.5 million community additional cost because of the seeding to go to 3,000. And of course, there's also a fundraising campaign involved in that. But just to bring us down there, to go across, we've got 53 million and we've got a net cost on the existing pad about 15.5. So this is a significant difference in the cost. However, the real advantage, of course, with this sport and entertainment complex is the revenue that we could generate from it. So if we come down the line here, for us to, assuming we debenture the full cost, and of course, that's only one way to fund it, there is in fact, council could decide to take money from other sources. But in most cases, that's money that you, the council could use for numerous other things. So it's not money that we could only use for the arena and therefore it's not mentioned at this point, but we'll assume for comparison it's debentured. So we're talking 53 million. We estimate that it would cost us approximately $3.8 million to carry the debt, the principal and interest over 30 years for that project. And based on the information we have, and finally, I've got the number right here, we would generate, based on the assumptions given, the best-case scenario, that we would generate approximately $1.38 million. So therefore, we reduce the cost to the taxpayer in that regard. We'd be left with approximately $2.4 million of cost for this project and we estimate that that would cost approximately a 6% increase on the levy.
Here we are.
Just for that project. Now, if we do the comparison across, at the 15.5 million, we estimate that that would cost us approximately $1.13 million a year to carry that principal and interest on that. We have no revenue that would come in to really offset that at this point, so that would be our net cost. So the difference for that, we're talking approximately 2.7% on the levy versus approximately 5.96%. So that's the comparative analysis on the project. And again, And again, there's a lot of issues. It's more or less to present the model because, as I mentioned, we're talking debenturing to compare it. Council may decide to do other sources, but it's still, it's a cost to us, no matter what option we take. Just the final slide is really simply dealing with some implications of the project. And junior B is a concern of ours, of course, in the communities. We believe that the revenue stream for junior Bs would be compromised. And it may be compromised or adjusted regardless of which option we take, but there's a significant concern if we make this move immediately. Limited space, we're talking about immediately for Niagara Falls, in Niagara Falls Arena to handle the A and the B team. We're not sure that that's compatible at this point. And the pro forma does not contemplate use by the junior Bs, even though, as we dealt with Capital Sports, they made it clear their plan was to, in fact, include Bs in the new complex. It just doesn't show up in the numbers, and that's yet to be worked out. The twin pad amenities would be downgraded. And we're saying, we're talking about building a pretty high-end twin pad. I mean, that decision is not made yet. But to go to a $7.3 million twin pad, obviously, there are a lot of amenities taken out of it. So there would be a significant adjustment for the community groups who have been very much involved in the design, and that's just a reality if we went with those numbers. Community funds raised to date may also be compromised. Competition with other entertainment venues and possible exclusions relative to a radius clause. And we've talked a little bit about this. We have received some correspondence today, actually, from the Convention Center, which certainly does not speak against this proposal, but does caution us that their proposal, other than ICE activities, would handle almost any event that could take place in this building. And they're just asking us to give that consideration. And of course, the point I already made, that we have no city lands in the tourism area that's being suggested, and so that would be an issue we would deal with. But my guess is that, as well as a lot of the other items, are negotiable and things we could discuss. And so the intent of this overview is just really to give a sense of the model and the kind of challenges we would be facing with switching gears from a twin pad to a new scaled-down twin pad in the major bowl. Thank you.
Thank you. Should we, Donald? I'm sure we have questions from members of council, Councilor Carrion.
Worship, we'll go back to that one slide. Just one question on that one slide, the financial slide.
Okay.
On the annual debt charges at 6% for 30 years, Worship McDonald, you said it was principal and interest?
That's correct.
At principal and interest? At 3.8?
Right.
I think the numbers work.
Well, I'm going to refer to our finance director who gave me the numbers, so I'm hoping it works.
Because if it was 6% on this in three, it would be...
That's interest and principal of one in over 30 years, I believe.
Yeah. Over 30 years?
So it's about $90,000 repayable. For 53. That might be, Mr. Burden?
Worship, we can double-check those numbers.
Would you?
Thank you.
Okay. Counselor Inone?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I'm not sure whether you want to deal with the motion we took in camera before we get into a full discussion on what we're doing. But I just want to highlight, for the residents who've been emailing us constantly, and, you know, I rarely refer to the review, but seeing as the review has not just covered the story but become the story, I wanted to highlight some of the things that is on the review website because I think it's important for residents to realize the type of feedback we're getting. It's taken eight years for anybody to call me pro tourism. I've been forever labeled anti-tourism, so to be called pro tourism now, I've gone rate from one extreme to another. But just to cover some of the emails we're getting personally and some of the website, and I asked staff if I could have a computer just to highlight some of the things that is misinformation. And a lot of these, I'll just say, it's time to give something back to the residents and time to stop giving to the tourism industry. I think we really have to make something clear. And I've emailed to everybody who's personally emailed us. We don't give tourism anything. If you're going to come and you're going to ask for a proposal, you're going to ask council to consider a proposal to build a 59-story hotel, you're not asking the residents to pay for it, you're paying for it. Any infrastructure improvements are paid for by development charges that the tourism operator pays for. We give nothing to the tourism operator. If I, and through you to Mr. McDonald, Mr. McDonald, are the residents funding the building of tourism operators hotels? Because I want to put this to bed in this right. We are not funding them, period.
Mr. McDonald?
That's correct. We provide no funding directly to any tourism operator.
You do have this to check.
Yes, I know. For those that have lobbied us in regards to, we're not just looking for an OHL pad, we're looking for an entertainment venue. And I've emailed them all back to say the same thing. You know, Capital Sports can put out any media announcement they want after swearing us to secrecy and not giving us the information until once they've gone to the media, which is such a one-sided plan to negotiate. But as I'm reading, as I'm answering emails that come back to us, I'm telling them, you have a, you know, we're awaiting a provincial, federal announcement for a convention center. And I think it's important because Mr. McDonald highlighted the letter that we got from the Convention Center Steering Committee President. For people who are sitting home shaking their head saying, oh, yeah, again, something that you guys are doing for tourism, we're not doing anything for tourism. I think it's important to highlight that the Convention Center that's coming, hopefully coming to council, and where we're looking for both federal and provincial announcements shortly, is being funded by $15 million private investment from the BIAs, cash from the tourist operators. This proposal is not coming to this local taxpayer for one cent. So anybody sitting at home screaming or starting to blog, or I've become the poster child for the reviews feedback site, and I have big shoulders, I really don't care, print something accurate. We aren't funding the Convention Center. The taxpayer isn't funding the Convention Center. The rich tourism operators that you're complaining about, and every email you email to our city site is paying for the Convention Center, which will hold community events according to Mr. Matovic, who emailed us today. So, you know, you're going to have that small contingent of people out there screaming, oh, yeah, you're doing for tourism. We're not. And I think it's really ironic that this developer, who stood before this council and misconstrued what they would do for the city, they said, we will invest $5 million. It was a loan. They were never giving us $5 million. And he also said, because I asked the question directly, where do you want us to put it? And they said, that's totally up to you. We'll put it where council wants us to put it, now wants us to put it in the tourism corridor. So for the residents who think this whole thing is for them, it's not. This whole thing is designed to make Capital Sports more money at a huge cost to the taxpayer.
Okay. Any other comments from members of council? Okay. Mr. Clerk, do you want to just deal with some in-camera issues?
Well, just since we're dealing with these related issues, I will give you what was recommended from in-camera for ratification. And this is just related to the sports-related issues. With regard to the Capital Sports Management Proposal, the council turned down the latest Capital Sports Proposal and a somewhat-related item that council not entertain the resubmitted proposal by J.S. Del Park.
Moved by Counselor Inone and seconded by Counselor Fisher. Okay, any discussion on that matter?
Thank you for recording this, Mayor.
Okay.
Four.
Alderman Fisher?
Four.
Alderman Inone?
Four.
Alderman Carrion?
Four.
Alderman Maves?
Four.
Alderman Peter Angelo?
Right.
Alderman Thompson?
Yes.
Alderman Wing?
In favor.
Mayor Selsey? Four. Passes. Okay, we have unanimous consent with respect to that motion. Counselor Inone?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And over the weekend, I am in consultation with my fellow council members. We've put forward a motion that we will put a counterproposal forward to Capital Sports. And just before I put the motion on the floor, I want the residents to understand that the major discussion was we could not afford Capital Sports' proposal to us. That didn't, that the counterproposal, we couldn't afford either. The motion that I put on the floor, Mr. Mayor, will not add one cent of new debt to our capital budget. I heard that loud and clear from the seniors who called, who don't have email, and for the residents who emailed us and said, don't, don't put any more new debt. I think the fact that we all campaigned on no new debt or not enormous amounts of new debt, this should make everybody happy. I move that the city will donate, service city land on Montrose Road with highway exposure south of Niagara Square of 20 acres to a value of $2 million. That the city will invest $8 million for capital funding for the project. We will waive development charges, permit and permit fees, with appropriate revenue stream to be worked out through negotiations. That the city will assist Capital Sports in securing additional dollars from other levels of government, and the city will facilitate meetings with various stakeholders, including BIAs and other interested investors. I think it's very important to include in the motion, and was unanimously supported downstairs, Mr. Mayor, that this will be the last counterproposal we entertain or give to Capital Sports. It is either a straight yes or no. We ask for a seven-day response, and we will not put anything more forward. I still move that.
Seconded by Counselor Fisher. Any discussion?
Any recording?
Okay, no discussion with regard to this matter. We have a recorded vote request. Clear on the motion. Alderman Diadadi?
Four.
Alderman Fisher?
Four.
Alderman Inone?
Four.
Alderman Carrion?
Four.
Alderman Maves?
Four.
Alderman Peter Angelo?
Right.
Alderman Thompson?
Yes.
Alderman Wing?
In favor.
Mayor Selsey?
Four.
Passes. We have unanimous consent again, members of council, so I think that gives a clear indication of the position of this council with respect to that. Counselor Diadadi and Counselor Peter Angelo?
Thank you, Worship. It was a very difficult week as we were fielding the calls, and I'm sure everybody on this council feels the same way. I spent a lot of time, as I'm sure my fellow counselors did, reviewing as much of the proposals we could. And of course, it wasn't until today that we got the rest of the information. We did not have the business plan or the pro forma. We since have reviewed it downstairs. And the thing that I think, which is very important for the residents to consider, is the fact that we did receive this letter from the Steering Committee for the Convention Center, and they will, in fact, be involved in the entertainment business. They will be able to have a 10,000-seat facility area for concerts. And this is one of the major generating opportunities that we have for this arena. All of a sudden, we're going to be competing with another facility, a superior facility within the city. And it was something we had to factor in when we were trying to figure out, could we afford this? Even without the Convention Center, we were going to have to raise the taxes approximately 6% to carry this, according to the numbers we had in front of us. And unfortunately, that would have been actually higher if we had added in the numbers that we would have been, having to lose some of the business to the competition, which would have been, namely, a Convention Center. As much as we feel strongly that this is a good thing, this would have been a great thing for the city, we don't want to be competing with ourselves. And I think that's why this council felt that we'll throw the proposal back to them. And if it is as good an idea as they are saying that it is, then we're going to help them put it on the ground and make it happen. So I just wanted to add those comments. I thought it was important that the public be aware that we are very close to getting an announcement on a Convention Center.
Participating, that's right.
That's right.
Thank you. Appreciate the comment. Counselor Peter Angelo?
Thank you, Worship. And I just want to take the public in council, I guess, backwards for a minute and talk about why we're actually where we are today. Quite a few years ago, we commissioned a study that dealt with our ICE users, and we teamed back with Worship when we had our ICE users feasibility study. And inside that study, two of the most important highlights were, one, that the community needed an extra ICE pad, and two, that we needed to replace some of our aging facilities, namely Niagara Falls Arena. At that time, your worship, council decided that we were going to move forward, we were going to replace Niagara Falls Arena, we were going to add one additional pad. We felt that it would be sufficient. Since we started down that road, your worship, we've received a couple unsolicited offers, and we've become sidetracked, I guess, your worship, in the process. I think, your worship, it's time to actually get back, remember why we started down this road. We started down this road for our users and to replace the ICE facilities that we have. We also know, your worship, that heading into the future, we have Stanford and Jack Bell. Stanford is over 50 years old. We get absolutely no economies of scale from those two arenas being side by side. We don't even have, I mean, we don't even have parking across the street. There's so many inefficiencies, your worship. That's why we're actually planning on having the twin pad to be a fourplex. So, your worship, the motion that I'd like to put on the floor is that, is for staff to come back or to investigate the economic and the financial benefits of immediately, your worship, expanding our twin pad facility to a state-of-the-art fourplex. And I would hope that Mr. McDonald has some information on that.
Okay, they're second to that motion. Counselor Thompson, you wish to speak to it? And Counselor Carrion, next.
I don't wish to speak to the motion. However, it's very, in the last couple of months, this has been like a roller coaster. We started off with $36 million for the downtown additional debt. At the same time, we jumped to $40 million for an arena, and we've been all over the place on the roller coaster. And at the same time, you get people that are enthusiastically looking for $40 million for an arena, and you get somebody calling and saying they're on a fixed income, don't spend 10 cents of my money, and people living in their own home on a fixed income, and seniors, single widows, et cetera, who can't even pay their sewer and water bill. So when you make these decisions, it makes you very sad and unhappy that you can't do anything. But I think that most people sitting around the table have come to the reality that taxes are prime importance with respect to not only this issue, but with the municipality in general and the future. I think that this has been up and down so much that I think we really have to step back and see where we're going with our finances. We've been here for two or three months already, and we really haven't had the opportunity to discuss finances whatsoever. And we're talking about $36 million and $40 million projects without doing it in conjunction with what we're doing with our budget. I hopefully have been known in the past, in spite of some comments that have been made in the past about the city being bankrupt and the reserves depleted, I think Mr., you ran out on me, Mr. Burton will attest to the fact that the debt ratio in the city of Niagara Falls at the end of 2003 was probably one of the lowest in the region. And in fact, there's a real concern. In fact, your own report of the BMA report talks about the escalating debt, about the depletion of reserves, about the problems where we're going with respect to this. And while I was out of town a little while ago, a paper had an article in it, which I have with me, which talked about something we did a long time ago, the pay-as-you-go. You try to use the revenue that you have coming in with respect to taxes and tailor your budget. We used to make an annual decision here around the council. Tell the CAO and the staff, we don't want any increase in the budget. You use in the past, the increase in assessment, and you utilize that to keep your budget under control and make it happen. And I think we have, and we haven't had an opportunity to make that suggestion, I think we got to send that message. We used to get a zero budget with all of the projects that we could examine that were appropriate for the municipality to determine if that's, if some of the new ones we wanted to look at for an increase in taxes. So we've been all over the, all over the ballpark with respect to huge projects. And it's sad because we're not in a financial position to look at these projects. And I wrestled with this over the weekend, and I think we got to go send a message to the staff. I think we have to try to pay as we go. And I think we have to even get back to zero-based budgeting, something we did years ago and something that St. Catherine's has just caught on to now. And I don't care whether we have to spend, you know, it's already February, whether we got to spend the next six months going over this budget line by line. Naturally, over the years, there are things that are in there that should not be in there, should be cut out, should be adjusted. And I think that because this was an election year, we're not in panic. In fact, next year, I'll be pushing to have our budget approved before January 1st. But now we got some time, and I think we should take the time to really examine where we're going with respect to our budget and what the people out there can really afford with respect to taxes. with respect to taxes. Now, you might say, "Well, what the hell's that got to do with hockey rinks and whatever?" Well, I gave this a lot of thought, and I said, "How can we, how can we get back to reality?" And we had a discussion a couple of weeks, or last meeting, about our infrastructure and our sewers. Well, I called Mr. Dulevik and asked him if I could have a copy of the reports that came to council in the last three years with respect to infrastructure. And as I stood for 15 minutes beside the copy machine, waiting for that much material to come back, talking about our infrastructure and how many concerns and problems we have, they are in excess of $100 million. And we can't fool people that we're going to resolve that infrastructure problem. You have to have a method of funding your projects over the years at a constant, consistent rate, and after you get 30 years down the road, you're still going to have $100 million of infrastructure. So, anybody who's suggesting that we're going to throw a bunch of money at this and we're going to solve the infrastructure problem, it isn't going to happen. We have to be consistent. We have to make sure we don't aggravate the existing problems with respect to sewage in the basement. We have to utilize our program for sump pumps and backflow valves and protect people as much as possible and not aggravate the existing situation by approving developments which are going to cause some problems. Anyway, what's the solution to this? Why am I saying this? Well, if anybody has watched me over the past 20 years, they have to look at me as the grandfather of the people mover system. We spent probably $14 million a few years ago, along with $22.5 million of other money to eliminate the rail line and the trains through the city of Niagara Falls in a crucial area. And I have, it's rather strange, because in 1970, I worked with Joe Green as a special assistant when he was Minister of Energy, Mines and Resources, and in 1970, his pet project at that particular time was to get rid of the rail line through the heart of the community and through the city of Niagara Falls. Anyway, it's gone, and it's done. The committee has been working on this for how many years? I've done a lot of work in the last two weeks, talking to people, from Mr. Lustig to John Kurnahan at the Parks Commission, to some of the major stakeholders along the way, and there's no flag-waver for this project anymore. There's nobody who is pushing the button and making it happen. Mr. Lustig is now in private practice. So, it's floundering, and if you talk to any of the major stakeholders, they're really not interested. They've lost interest in the project. It's not moving forward. So, all of a sudden, you look, and we spent totally $40 million for a rail line with all the other people participating. And I'm suggesting that we get a report back as quickly as possible from Mr. Lustig or Mr. Schramm or whoever is looking, or Mr. McDonald, who's ever looking after the project now, to do a quick assessment, talk to the Parks Commission. Now, they told me, without exception, they have another route they want to go. They're not really interested in the people mover going through the park. So, I think you've got $19 million worth of property. If it's rezoned in the appropriate place along the rail line, there are millions of dollars that it can accrue back to this municipality. The only concern I have, we have, we worked hard to get $25 million from the federal government, through Mr. Pilatieri at the time, and that money is sitting there, and I wouldn't want to forego that money if we can utilize it in some way. And I think that we could call a quick tender for a rubber tire system to run on the existing roadways and to provide that transportation system that we thought was going to be a people mover system, and was going to be a loop system, and so crucial to our future. As you know, the traffic has not materialized. I doubt if they did a study today, unless things changed drastically, that there would be sufficient revenues from ridership to make that people mover a reality. So, I think, and if you listen to any of the tourism people today, they're talking about walkways in between hotels, tying into the casino, the Parks Commission with their table rock tied into the hotels up above with covered walkways and a new elevation system. Everything is changing. The objective was to get people to move around as quickly as possible. All of a sudden, they might be moving around in escalators, walking escalators, between the hotels and the casino and in the Falls View area. So, when these things come on stream, all of a sudden, you wonder something we started working on 20 years ago, and there are no, there was no movement in it. All of a sudden, there's a great opportunity, there's a great asset that might, that really might make all of these things, infrastructure, four-pad arenas and other things, the possibility of these being within our grasp and our reach without having a negative effect on the tax base, and that was my objective. So, with that preamble, and I don't know whether there's a motion on--
There's a motion on the floor.
All right, now, but after that, I would suggest that we have a report back as quickly as possible from Mr. McDonald after conjunction and discussion with the Parks Commission, Mr. Lustig, and the other people that had been involved, and some of the stakeholders. And I'd also like to see, to get an indication if some of the stakeholders, if these zones, railway lines adjacent to their properties were rezoned, what, would there be interest from these people in acquiring this property? Tremendous asset. After 20 years of work, it doesn't look like there's a lot of enthusiasm anywhere after a lot of phone calls and research, and I think that the opportunity is for us to maybe recoup some of the taxpayers' monies that were spent before.
Counselor Carrillo.
Back to the motion, Your Worship.
Yes, she's speaking to the motion. Counselor, do you need counsel to read the motion, please?
That's, wait a minute. Now you got me confused. Staff report back on possible expansion of the community twin pad to a fourplex.
Moved by Counselor Peter Angelo.
Counselor Thompson. I just, my question was, all financial aspects in the report?
You have a question?
Elimination of the other arenas as part of it?
You mean to include that? Is that your concern?
I'm asking if that's what Alderman, Counselor Peter Angelo, had in mind, all financial aspects in the report, including the elimination of the existing arenas, selling the land.
Yes, I think that's fair to say.
Okay, thank you.
Give me a clue. Okay. Counselor Peter Angelo.
Yeah, thank you, Your Worship, and I was going to say, like, after we're finished with our discussion, I hope that we're going to allow some people from Capital Sports the opportunity to speak. If you need a motion, Your Worship, I'll put a motion on.
Okay, if that's your pleasure, we can deal with that in a second.
Well, yeah, we still have a motion on the floor.
Yes, you do. Counselor, I know you should speak to that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd hate to read in tomorrow's review that we are going to tax residents even more to build a four pad now, just to clarify. Alderman Peter Angelo's motion is for long-term planning, not for this budget?
Your Worship, I'm asking staff to come back with a report. That's exactly what I'm asking.
That's all, that's right. That's all we're asking.
Show us, Your Worship, the implications of moving immediately, coming to a fourplex.
That's all we're asking. Okay? That's all we're asking at this point. So, you heard, we had sufficient discussion, you heard the motion. Called the vote, all is in favor. Motion's carried. Thank you very much. Now, Counselor Aiononi.
Thank you. In regards to getting unsolicited offers, we've spent months now dealing with a number of unsolicited offers on different types of venues. The downtown, colossal waste of our time and money. We've now spent endless time with two different hockey proponents. I think perhaps the city has to create some sort of policy for unsolicited offers. I think that, I'd actually like to know what it's cost us to actually investigate and do all this work for unsolicited offers, because we have a set path in mind on how we're going to spend our money. We did a five-year capital last year. We have a council strategic plan on what we've deemed to be important. I'd like to move that staff bring us back a report highlighting a policy for council to deal with unsolicited offers, because right now, any unsolicited offer takes us straight off rail in what we're doing and takes us an entirely other venue. Everything else gets left aside while we deal with the unsolicited offer, and then we come back to the mainstream of business. So, I would like to see some sort of policy we have in dealing with them.
I'm not sure if that's an item of control, but do we have a secondary to that motion?
Yeah.
Counselor Wayne. Mr. McDonald, you wish to speak to that?
No, I think, to be honest, it's a reasonable request. It's not uncommon for councils to have a guideline at least how to address it, and so we'd be happy, or drought, and happy to.
Okay. Any other comments on that matter? Okay, I'll call the vote, all is in favor. Motion's carried. Counselor Peter Angelo.
Yeah, Your Worship, I mean, I understand that some people from Capital Sports are here tonight. I think we should at least offer them the courtesy to speak if they wish, and I would still make the motion.
We have a motion by Counselor Peter Angelo to allow Capital Sports to speak if they wish, and seconded by Counselor Diadati. Any comments? All is in favor? Motion is carried. Thank you. Mr. Leader, do you wish to make any presentation to council? This isn't a debate, but if you'd like to make comments, we'd like to listen to them.
No, my name's Cyril Leader, for the record, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak, and I was just here to answer questions. I was hoping there would be some questions from the council. We appreciate you getting back to us with a quick response and giving us at least an offer or an opportunity or an option to consider. My one comment would be, Your Mayor, Your Worship, would be that we have an opportunity to discuss these things. I find it a little bit frustrating that we find out in council, I come to a meeting, to find out the position, and a lot of the information on that slide, we could have discussed in advance, and we could have talked about this option as well, and find it a little bit unusual that we would be negotiating that or discussing that through a council motion as opposed to face-to-face. Fairly unique for me.
Yeah, I guess, if you'd like, as members of council, you can make comment. We had some discussion about that, but Mr. Leader, we really didn't have all the information. The staff had the information, and council provided that information today, and there was a summary that they prepared and they worked on the last couple of days to endeavor to have this information. I think council is clear, but there may be some council members who wish to make some comments.
Counselor Aiononi.
Thank you, and just, I'll reiterate the comments I said to Mr. Pablo, who called me today. You find this unusual? We were asked to keep the first proposal test quiet. I think I heard from the media, it's the first time they were not able to get details of a proposal out of members of council with media interviews, and then we have to read from your group after you've done a media interview, the details that you've already given to the media. We quite understand being--
Just to be clear, we did give that material to your staff in advance.
You gave that--
And we gave it to you the same day.
Okay, Mr.--
Just not a debate, please.
No, I'm sure I was, but let's make something clear to the residents, because that was extremely misleading. You interviewed--
I don't think it was.
I really don't care. You interviewed with the media.
Mr. Leader, please.
You interviewed with the media. You then provided the mayor the information at 1:09 PM that you interviewed with the media. We got the information emailed from you at 1:12. You gave the mayor's office three minutes to inform us after you'd already done the interview with the media. Actually, your preamble to us in your email was, "We thought we would give you this information because we know the media will be calling you." To us, that's unorthodox. We held by your request not to speak to the media on any details of your first offer. When we read the details of your second offer in the media after you'd already gone to them before us, to me, that's unorthodox.
Thank you. And Mr. McDonald?
Just want to comment, I think, to be fair to Mr. Leader and his group, to be honest, they've been extremely professional and provided all the data to staff. Staff were reviewing that information to share with council, and the first opportunity was tonight. But what had happened, if council was in favor of the general model and the direction, we would have followed with meetings to begin negotiating and working out those details. And council's opinion has been expressed tonight, is that they didn't want that to happen, so that's probably why there hasn't been the face-to-face, but there was no attempt. Certainly, I think Capital Sports knew that they were to direct the data to staff. They did so, and in fact, anything we've asked for was provided to us. So, I just want to make that clear. Correct, council did not have it all, but it was with staff's review and shared with council.
And just to qualify that, Mr. Leader, we do appreciate and respect your opinion and your position with respect to the negotiations. However, our clerk was acting CAO last week, and he received the information from you, I believe, and at that point, I believe he was asked not to share that with council to maintain that information with senior staff only. Is that correct, Mr. Clerk?
Through the chair, and not to belabor a point, I concur with what Mr. McDonald said, that Capital Sports have been very professional, our dealings with Mr. Leader have been very professional. There was information that was sent to myself and Mr. McDonald midweek last week, which was given to us with the proviso that it be shared with the appropriate senior staff for analysis, and then that, you know, we would then report back to council, but there was, at least in that initial email, there was some expectation that that information was to just be reviewed by senior staff, and then subsequently on Friday, when there was the media interview, some additional information was released by Mr. Leader, which is his prerogative.
Thank you. I think that qualifies the case, Mr. Leader. We do appreciate the fact that we have a council that has to make a decision, and tonight was the first opportunity they had to make that, and I think the message was very clear. So, we thank you for your intention. We have a counteroffer back to you in respect of the position of all members of council, which was unanimous, so you have an opportunity to respond if you wish, but thank you for that. Thank you very much. Yes, Counselor Carrillo.
Well, Your Worship, I just want to make one comment to Mr. Leader. I don't want him to walk away from the podium thinking that we're not grateful for his offer. We are grateful for his offer. The community would love to have a hockey team. We just can't afford to pay for it. If we can come up with a way to do a deal with Mr. Leader and the way Alderman Aiononi's motion is, I'm sure that we'd make everyone happy. I just don't want anyone to misconstrue. We'd love to have a hockey team in this town. We'd love to be supporters of his ice dogs, and we appreciate him coming forward, and it's just business, and hopefully, we can work out a deal that's beneficial to them and that doesn't cost the taxpayers any money, and we'll all go forward.
I think Counselor Carrillo, that certainly sums it up. We did hear that concern of the residents, that they're concerned about their tax dollars and how they're being spent, but I think we all received those comments, both pro and con. Counselor Peter Angelo.
Yeah, Your Worship, I'd just like to say as well that I too appreciate the offer, although I think we've been told before that we are not allowed to, I guess, take private investors, Your Worship, into a room and sit there and negotiate with them. We just cannot do that, I guess, under the guidance of the municipal act. So, Your Worship, whenever we're going to present information, unless we're actually going to sit down and negotiate details and have staff do that with them, then we have to come to an open forum, so whether it's, whether it's open council here, where the residents at home can see us, or whether it's downstairs, where the reporters are, it still has to be in a public forum. Your Worship, that's just the way that it is.
Thank you. Again, Mr. Leader, thank you very much, and we do appreciate your interest, and again, you might decide if you concur with your group as to what your next position might be, so thank you very much. Members of council, we've got to move on to the next item in the agenda. Mr. Clerk, do you want to do the balloting at this point?
Through the chair, we thought later on in your agenda, obviously, the citizen appointment report, as you're aware, there's a number of different committees that you will be appointing citizen reps for, because the ballot is quite expensive. We thought maybe we'd give it to you sooner than later. You might want to take a bit of a five- or 10-minute recess to go through it. We just thought it might be easier to do now than waiting till the very end of the meeting and just sort of sitting around with dead air.
A pleasure, Counselor. Have a motion, please. Moved by--
You need a motion, but we just want to go ahead.
Okay. All right, then, we'll take, we'll take a five-minute recess, we'll have the ballots distributed, and we'll do a quick vote. Yes.
Before we take a five-minute recess, Counselor, if you'd go ahead and get it ready.
Well, I think the clerk, it'll only take a few minutes, just to get the clerk, these ballots back to him, if you'd vote quickly, and then we'll go on to our business, and they can tally the ballots in the meantime. So, we'll take a five-minute recess, and the ballots will be circulated. Thank you. Please stay in the room and vote.
So, anything else?
Members of council, the next item is the consent agenda and Counsel Carrier, one more please. Counsel Carrier.
Your worship, I'd like to take one out there's I missed one, I have a conflict on L 2007-06, permanent closing of part two, I have an interest in a piece of property in that, in that report, your worship.
Okay, that's so noted and, okay, move the agenda by Counsel Peter Angelo, seconded by Helen Wing, is that correct?
Just one final as well.
Yes, please.
2007 dash 07, Mr. Burden, please.
You want to remove that?
Yeah, I just wanted to announce the matter.
Okay, do you want to lift it or just, just make an announcement?
Can I do the, the answer?
Sure, okay, go ahead.
Okay, I just wanted to highlight the Heritage Week kickoff event in the Municipal Heritage Committee report, it's going to be held at Niagara Square on February 16th, 17th, and 18th, and it's the annual displays there, this year's theme is the heritage of the everyday, which has been a really thought provoking thing to try and gear up for, so I just wanted to make mention of it and encourage the public to come out and see the various displays.
Good, thank you. Any other comments with regard to the consent agenda, Counsel Thompson?
Yes, just the proposed cemetery fee increase, is that, is that in conjunction with the discussion with the cemetery directors and the funeral directors?
Yes, the chair.
Through the mayor, each year we actually advise our funeral partners of the intended increase, it averages 3% this year, so yes, they have been consulted with.
Okay, we have all the matters and consent agenda before us, the motion to approve, call the vote, all those in favor, any opposed, motions carried, thank you. So additional, any additional matters or amendments with regard to bylaws in addition? Okay, at this point, I'd like to have a motion to reduce the bylaws, bylaws be given a first reading, Counsel Peter Angelo, seconded by Counsel Diadati, you've heard the motion, any questions or comments, having seen none, all those in favor, motions carried.
Bylaws 2007 dash 25 to 2007 dash 30, we had a first time, we'll do a second motion if that's asked me.
Okay, there was a request that the CIOs making with regard to a bylaw, item number...
Your worship, I'm just checking, I might have missed the motion, Alderman Carrier asked to pull out the one item from the consent bylaw, did we get a motion to deal with that item separately?
Deal with it as a conflict on that.
Okay, and he has a conflict, so he has to declare that, so that's fine. Kind of a motion to give the bylaws a second and third reading, Counsel Peter Angelo, seconded by Counsel Diadati, you've heard the motion, any further questions or comments, having seen none, all those in favor, motions carried, thank you.
Bylaws 2007 dash 25 to 2007 dash 30, we had a second and third time, it passed.
Thank you. Due business to Counselor Thompson, Counsel Fisher, Counsel Peter Angelo, Einoni, and Diadati.
Yes, just to follow up to my other preamble, I'd like to make a motion with Mr. McDonald bring in a report with respect to the vacant lands with the people mover rail line, and, and also any other lands that may be surplus that the municipality could consider to help us through accomplishing some things, and also to defer any increases in taxes.
I'll second that.
We have a motion on the floor, move it a second, any questions? Counsel Wing.
I think just in light of the preamble, I better declare a conflict, there were references to the people mover in Niagara Parks Commission.
Okay, thank you. Counsel Peter Angelo?
Yeah, your worship, and I fully agree with the report, I just want to know basically how extent, sorry, how extensive we're going to tell staff to get, I mean, on a lot of our corners, your worship, we own daylighting triangles that go back 30 feet, are we now going to look to actually perhaps separate half of that land that we have there and acquire some revenue from it, I mean, how extensive are we going to get, and are we going to give staff that direction?
We've actually asked for that in the past, and I know that the CIO has a list of some properties, but we may have to do, look at the declaration of declaring of surplus, is that right, Mr. McDonald?
Yeah, your worship, we have looked at some, it's been a while since we've done a full sort of search of the inventory, and my general feeling would be we would not go to those kind of details like the triangles, but look at any obvious large pieces, and we would have to assess them, I guess, relative to should we take some action with changing zoning as we did recently with the Mondros property, so we would do a full analysis of that and bring it back.
Okay, Counsel Thompson.
Yes, thank you, this is something that has been brought to my attention over the past several months, and it has to do with macular degeneration.
Oh, wait a second, can we just deal with that motion first? We haven't passed the motion. Okay, so, we have a motion on the floor, any other comments on that motion, all those in favor, the motion is carried, thank you. Further, new business?
Has to do with macular degeneration, and this is a deterioration of the macular with respect to, in most cases, people who are seniors, and I hate to admit it, but this came to my attention, sitting in a doctor's office in Port Colvin, who is a specialist who treats people with this particular affliction, which I have had the unfortunate situation of having, and this is a situation where the bleeding of the vessels in the back of the eye, leak into the eye and basically block it out, and you slowly lose your sight, in some cases in both eyes. The reason why I'm bringing this up today is the fact that I think seven or eight provinces, this particular treatment, which costs $3,275 and is not covered by OHP and most government plans, it is a situation where people who have this affliction, and there are about 15,000 people in the province in need of this particular treatment, and in fact, if they do not get this treatment, they will go blind, and so we have a situation where people are actually, because they cannot afford a particular treatment, in this particular case, will go blind, and the result is that they usually have to have care in a facility, which probably costs substantially more than what it would be otherwise. Strangely enough, I, and I'm going to give this package to the clerk, I have sections out of hand, so where Mr. McGinty, as a, as a member of the, a leader of the opposition, was challenging Mr. Clement, the Minister of Health and Long Term Care, at that particular time, and urging Mr. Clement to institute as quickly as possible this particular treatment, and the cost of this treatment, which is so vital and necessary to people who are losing their sight, the, it's rather interesting, and I hope a copy will go to the members of council, how vigorous the present premier was in trying to get Mr. Clement to have this included in the treatment. I'm just going to read one little section of Mr. McGinty's comments. My question for the Minister of Health, I want to return to the matter raised by my colleague just a few moments ago relating to Mrs. Marie Thurston, who is sitting in the gallery today. Minister, your answer in a word was unacceptable. Marie Thurston, so you, so you are a bit familiar with her, is 72 years of age, she was widowed some 28 years ago, she raised her three children on her own, she worked as a store clerk, she has gone blind in her left eye, she is now losing sight in her right eye, and she can't afford the treatment. Visudine that costs $2,000 for treatment, and some people, while the total cost of her treatment will be at least $15,000. He goes on to chastise the government with respect to not including this. I have a petition and also a resolution with respect to this, to be sent to the government, again, Mr. McGinty and also George Smitherman, and also I have another petition that was also sent by Mr. Crater to the government to try and convince them because of the people that have approached him at this office. I think this is a travesty, that people can actually go blind in this province when other provinces are looking after this, all you have to do is experience this on a personal note, and all of a sudden you realize the importance of it. I would like to present this to the clerk, and also a copy to members of council, and bring back a resolution to this council that we can send on, again, to Mr. Crater to add ammunition to his efforts to try to make this happen, and also the Health Minister and Mr. McGinty, to see if we can't get this to assist people.
Make that in the form of a motion, please?
Yes, I do.
And seconded, by Counsel Carrier, any discussion in the motion, all those in favor, motions carried, thank you. Counsel Fisher?
Thank you, on Saturday, February the 3rd, there was an article in the Review, "The Defibrillator Saves a Hockey Player," and this happened at the Chippewa Arena. Apparently this gentleman, who was skating, collapsed, and they recognized that he needed cardiac preliminary resuscitation, and there was a nurse, and there was also Phil Urcker from Chippewa, he's the arena worker, and he ran to get the, to the work box, holding the portable defibrillator in the front lobby, grabbed it, and raced back onto the ice, and in seconds, they were able to start the action, and they were able to bring him back to living. And I really think we should send a letter on to the people involved, and especially our worker at the arena, who worked and acted in such a responsible way, and I will leave this with the clerk, so that he has all the information, and the wife of Mr. Gibson was absolutely thrilled to think that we had responsible people in our city.
Do you want to make that a motion? Let's make that a motion, Counsel.
Yes, I will.
Seconded by Counsel Carrier, any discussion? Yes, Counsel Carrier.
Your worship, just a quick comment, that someone had the foresight to put the defibrillators in the arenas, otherwise, they wouldn't have been a defibrillator there to save that man's life, and I don't think that's the first time that we've saved someone in one of our arenas.
Thank you for the comment. Counsel Peter Angelo?
Yeah, your worship, perhaps we can send it off to Recreation Commission as well, I believe that they have a set of pride award that they take care of.
Good, I'll do that as well. Okay, it's included in the motion, all those in favor, motions carried, thank you. Counsel Peter Angelo?
Your worship, I have two items, and they both deal with water, I guess, your worship, in the city of Niagara Falls, if you're a tenant, and you go to basically rent an apartment or a house, and you want to hook up to water, the city asks you to put down a deposit of $200. Other services, your worship, such as hydro, Bell, some of them require a deposit, but every one that requires a deposit gives it back to the user. The city of Niagara Falls does not give it back, so therefore, if you rent a house for, let's say, 10 years, or an apartment, which you very well could be, you have to give the city $200, and the city holds your money, at the end of that time, the city gives you back $200. Your worship, I think it would be only fair if we included a provision that if we're going to collect money from people and hold on to it, that the least that we can do is basically pay them interest on the money. So I would make the motion, your worship, that Mr. Burton come back with a report that outlines, and I know that you've spoken to him about this as well, your worship?
Yes.
I know, and I would make a motion that Mr. Burton come back with a report that tells us the amount that we would be looking at to have included in the budget, your worship.
So seconded to the motion, Counsel Wing, thank you, thank you, Counsel. Do you worship comment from Mr. Burton, at this point, Mr. Burton, now you're preparing a report for council, you're working on that?
Through your worship, we were intending to do that, we have been working closely with the Niagara Falls Hydro, who is the agent of the city, and we also had hoped that that report would be included in the municipal utility budget.
Okay, thank you, so it's forthcoming, that's great, appreciate you bringing it forward, all those in favor, motions carried, thank you. Counsel Diadati, I'm sorry, let me start.
Thank you, the second item, your worship, has once again to deal with water, except it's not on the tenant side, it's on the landlord side, and your worship, I've heard some from, I've heard from some landlords, I guess that would like to see the process changed, the way that we do it in Niagara Falls is that we do charge the tenant, but then if the bill is more than a $200 deposit that they have, let's say the bill is $380, we automatically charge the owner of the property, the other difference, which would be $180. They have absolutely no recourse but to pay this money, otherwise it goes on the taxes of the property. Your worship, I guess what I'd like is, I'd like a report back from staff that tells me, first of all, how much money we're talking about on an annual basis, that tenants are defunct on, and that property owners have to pay, and your worship, basically... And, your worship, basically, how it's done in other municipalities. Are we separate and apart from other municipalities? Do we do it differently? And I want to know, thirdly, your worship, what do other services do? I don't believe that other services directly tie the tenant to the actual landowner. So, your worship, I would make a motion that I get those three things back in other party.
Okay. Moved by Counselor Peter Angelo, seconded by Counselor Wing. Any discussion on that? Having seen none, all those in favor? Motion's carried. Thank you. Okay, and Counselor Di Addati.
Thank you, your worship. My item is an item, we all received an email from Chris Bymont from Cataract Bowling in regard to smoking shelters, excuse me. And I did speak with MPP Kim Crater this afternoon in regard to this. As you know, it's a provincial law that has banned smoking rooms. Unfortunately, for people like Mr. Bymont, he spent a great deal of money in the area of $45,000 constructing a smoking room that has a very, that has negative pressure where there's very no, there's no smoking in the room. And having bowled for a number of years, and it was bad for quite a few years, you would come away smelling of the smoke, and since they put in the room, there were no issues. Well, they were forced to shut it down. And not for a second am I in favor of smoking, nor is Mr. Bymont. This is just more an issue of fairness and equality. And as you know, there were some exemptions under the provincial law, and certain places such as the casino have since opened up smoking shelters. Now, Mr. Bymont is in fact allowed to open up a smoking shelter by the letter of the law. Unfortunately, the problem is, it's a safety issue. As you know, moisture and bowling do not mix. Little bit of water on the bottom of a bowling shoe, and somebody could fall and break something pretty serious. And he's very concerned. So the fact is, he could not put something like that, and it doesn't make sense. And he's a little bit concerned that, he's lost a lot of bowlers to the U.S., and he's fair that it's not fair that some businesses are treated differently than others. And what, I spoke with Mr. Crater today about what we could do, and perhaps there are some certain unique situations that need to be reexamined. And he thought if we could send a motion from this council at requesting that he take that back to his government, and they could perhaps look at revising the policy of this situation to make it more fair. I would make that motion, your worship.
Okay. Seconded by Counselor Einoni. Any discussion? Having seen none, all those in favor? Motion's carried. Thank you. Counselor Einoni.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My computer's not working. I did have a mini presentation, but I'll keep it brief. Anybody who watches the news knows that last week, they had a climate conference in Paris. The resolution, the resolution out of that conference in Paris is that humans are 90% responsible for the problem with the climate and the eroding of the climate. Right now, Canada is currently on target to miss its Kyoto Accord of a 6% reduction in greenhouse gas emissions. And you know what? I don't even think this is anymore a political issue. I mean, I don't think that when things get so bad with the environment, the people who suffer are going to suffer due to political party that they're affiliated with. I did have a presentation to refer to that I won't put together now, but I will say that I have one motion that I can't put on the floor without my presentation. Britain is now making it mandatory that their schools include in the curriculum Al Gore's documentary, "An Inconvenient Truth." And I don't know if anybody around this council table has seen it, but it is a staggering documentary, and actually, he was just nominated for a Nobel Peace Prize. I think it should be a part of a curriculum. It's an inexpensive way to teach young people right now what pollution is doing to our environment. So I'd like to make a motion that we send a resolution to MPP Crater and the Minister of Education, that they include in the curriculum of the schools, making it mandatory that the students watch the documentary, "An Inconvenient Truth."
Okay, is there a second or? Is he seconding or just a question?
Yeah.
Counselor Peter Angelo, seconded that. And do you make comment?
I'd just like to say that, your worship, that I know that already at our school, social sciences, geography, and the religion department are showing the movie to students, and they are doing activities on it. So it's already in our school system, your worship, but I mean, it is a good suggestion.
Good. Okay, now we can still reinforce that. Any other comments? No, having seen none, all those in favor? Motion's carried. And now, is another issue?
Yes, no, well, what I'll be bringing forward to council then at the next meeting is, they're asking, they're asking municipalities across the world to make a difference. And I know we're just tiny little Niagara Falls, but I think that we should take a leading role in the region. I think we should come up with a Think Green campaign. There are inexpensive ways to do it that pull the community together, and I think that we should really take a leadership role. I will bring a presentation to council the next time. I was a little consumed with hockey today in regards to putting my presentation together for you, and this isn't working. But I really think, like we did the Safe City campaign, we could do a Think Green campaign and extend it across the region. So I will bring that forward to the next council meeting.
Thank you. And members of council, we're going to have a sting along in the absence of the ballots having been returned. Mr. Clerk? Mr. Clerk, do you have any comments on?
Adjourn.
No, we can't adjourn. I think we have to pass that motion tonight. Reprove.
Move that through with one more question. Reprove by council.
We will bring back a bylaw with the appointments at the next meeting, so if you take it on face, our face, that we'll come back with the right names. I mean, if you want to get out of here and not wait to find out who won, we will be bringing that back in the form of a bylaw next meeting anyways.
Counselor Peter Angelo.
Your worship, I think a lot of people are watching to see whether or not they're appointed. I mean, they'll stick around the extra five minutes.
Okay.
I mean, we will make, we can make the information available on our website tomorrow, but...
I think it probably...
Got a captive audience at home, I don't know, handpuckus for a while, or something like that.
Well, we can, we can have a temporary recess for a few minutes. If you don't leave, please, I appreciate that, and we'll wait for the ballots to be returned. Okay? Thank you. One more just sec.
Although, a couple of things. In three of the positions, we have a three-way tie for the final two positions, and what we did last time was we just added an extra person to each of those committees instead of having a runoff. The only problem we have is property standards. We actually have a three-way tie for fourth, and we'll deal with that later. But, so with regard to Board of Museums, we're actually going to put forward nine names, and those in no particular order would be Tony Caruso, Margaret Dunn, Dino Fazio, John Harkness, Marie Henry, Don Jackson, Margaret Mingle, Daniel Radrick, and Gord West. Similarly, Park in the City, nine positions, we're going to put forward 10, and therefore, the successful applicants Francis Berry, Arlene DeJulie, Frank Four, Janet Hassel, Paisley Janbury Poole, Gus Cornelius, Pat Mascarin, Eloise Marie Schumacher, Naveen Shahani, and Vina Shahani. Municipal Heritage Committee, similarly, instead of the six, we'll put forward seven, and the successful ones are Don Ead, David Fotheringham, Rashad Hindy, Margaret Mingle, April Petrie, Kathleen Powell, and Sharon Shearing. Court of Revision, three appointees, David Bartram, Edward Kearns, and Rudy Mascarin. Arts and Culture Committee, 12, the successful ones are Karen Akula, John Albanese, Laurie Crane Enes, John Harkness, Philomena McCracken, Mark Matthews, Michael Pascal, Daniel Radrick, Dr. Shalini Shahani, Brian Smilsky, George Vallow, Cheryl Wiley. For the Fest Viewers, three appointees, Gary Beck, Jake Hebert, and Rudy Mascarin. For Recreation Commission, 12 appointees, Paul Campagato, Dan Cummings, Rob DeJulie, Enzo Delmarca, Don Jackson, Paisley Janbury Poole, Pat Mascarin, Glenn Mercer, Rich Merlino, Delphina Peter Angelo, Joe Tellerico, and Mick Wolf. Trails and Bikeways Committee, everybody who put in were acclaimed, and I'll just read those names, Tommy Anello, Martin Bersens, Tony Caruso, Pat Shivers, Dean Kirkshank, Harvey Gordon, Kelly Dickinson, Deborah Kidd, Glenn Mercer, Judy Quagliero, Robert Romanek, and Lisa Wilson. Committee of Adjustment, five appointees, the successful ones are Chuck Antonio, Mark Cahill, Jack Collinson, Sam Raffina, Guy Prata. So the one issue we've got is property standards. There's four appointees. We've got three that have a plurality of votes, and those are John Anstruther, Sam LaRosa, and Joe Tellerico. So I'm at council's wish whether we just go with three on that. Like I said, there's a three-way tie for fourth. If you want to do a runoff ballot on those that are tied, I take your direction on that.
Want to confirm that again, then, Mr. Clerk? The property standards, we have the tie, the tie for the fourth position?
For the fourth position.
And there's a three-way tie between?
There's a three-way tie between Gary Beck, Frank DeLuca, and Anna Lee.
Okay, do you have any ballots prepared yet, or no?
Well, I, you know, if you want to do a runoff ballot tonight, do you want to do it next meeting? Do you want us to maybe go back to staff and see whether there's really a necessity for four? That's what I'm asking for council's direction. If you want to do a runoff, you can do a runoff.
Pleasure, Counsel. Pardon?
Refer to staff. See if we're in the fourth.
Refer to staff? Is that your motion? Hung, Lee? Is there a second to the motion? Refer to staff. Counselor Carrillo?
Preferentially, try to make room for the, for the four. For the four.
Well, we have, we have a tie, three-way tie for four. So you have to, you have to select out of three people for the four. So...
And then we have a seven?
Do you want to increase the size of the committee?
Well, I mean, we...
Mr. Clerk?
We gave you the three names. You can write your pick on a piece of paper. I'm sure we could count those pretty quickly. So why don't we do that?
Yes, let's just, we'll have the balloting, so we have...
Write it down on a piece of paper, type, tear a piece of paper. The names again are Frank DeLuca, Anna Lee, and Gary Beck. This is for, this is for the fourth position on property standards.
It's a secret ballot.
Put your name on it. The ballot?
With your name on it? With your name on it? Okay.
And they're going to have to put their names on it.
That's right. Put your name on the ballot, please.
Counselor, put your, put your name on it as well. Put anybody's name on it.
Yep, put your name on the ballot, please. All counselors?
Anna Lee.
Frank Three.
Rockness.
Still tied. No. It was, it was tied after three votes.
Okay, you want a motion to adopt those? A motion to adopt all those, all those votes? Moved by Counselor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Peter Angelo. Any comments? All those in favor? Motion's carried. Thank you very much. Motion to adjourn. Counselor Carrillo, Counselor May.